Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 27. I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mrs. Roscoe?
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Seven members present and voting.
Thank you very much. Being that this is our summer meeting, I do not believe we have any student board representatives with us, so we look forward to seeing them again in the fall. And I will turn this over to Mrs. Belizzi for the presentation and awards.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So at this time, I'd like to invite up Mr. Christopher Daley, who is our Athletic Director for Mark T. Sheehan High School, and Mr. Enzo Zacco, who is the Principal of Mark T. Sheehan High School, to announce the recognition of our Girls Outdoor Track and Field Team for their outstanding accomplishments, being named as the 2022 CIAC Class M State Champions and the 2022 CIAE State Open Champions. So if you could come on up and join us, please.
Hi. Happy summer. I know it probably doesn't feel like it started yet because it still feels like we're in track mode, but hopefully you've enjoyed the few days that you've had off since you guys ended with Nationals and everything. The rain today reminded me a little bit of the Class M State Championship. It was on and off all day long. I think that Coach Farley is the first coach in history to take a Gatorade Bucket Bath at the end of the championship and actually dry off a little bit. But despite those conditions, we were able to, you know, show what we could do when it's raining or when it's dry a couple of weeks later. So I just wanted to, you know, say a few words about the whole team, and then I'm also going to recognize some individuals before we call you all up. You know, you guys had a truly special season, a historic season, one of the best seasons in the history of Sheehan Athletics. And I know that, you know, we got to talk to you at our Senior Sports Awards Night, and Coach Farley talked a little bit about the history and what this means. It's the first state open championship in the history of Sheehan High School. There was no doubt who the best track and field team is in the entire state. Winning Class M's was sweet, and you were all excited, but we could tell that you were hungrier than that. And I think even going back to when we won the indoor championship, and a lot of the people on the outdoor team are also members of the indoor team, it was an outstanding accomplishment, but there was still that sense of that you haven't accomplished all your goals yet. And hopefully now you feel like you've checked all the boxes, because I think you've, I don't think you've left any boxes unchecked in terms of what you wanted to accomplish. It's been absolutely, absolutely amazing. You know, last night, I was watching the Colorado Avalanche win the Stanley Cup, which is the most beautiful trophy in all the sports. And afterwards, they interviewed, I don't remember, they interviewed one of the players, and they say, "What was the hardest thing about this season?" And he said, "Well, the hardest thing was that from day one, we were the favorite, and all season long, everybody was gunning for us. And we had the highest expectations we ever had, and sometimes it's hardest to win when you have those high expectations." Well, the Sheehan Girls Outdoor Track Team went into the season with the highest expectations that you could have, and those were expectations that you put on yourselves, and you rose to the occasion to accomplish them. The goal of every single other girls' track team in the state was to beat Sheehan, hands down. We were the best, and everybody knew that we were the best. And in order to be able to perform under those sorts of expectations requires a tremendous amount of commitment and discipline, and it was truly special. So congratulations on not just being the Class M Champions, but also, my favorite part of this banner is the bottom there where it says "The State Open Champion," because that's going to be the only time in the gym where it says that. I wanted to just mention a few of the individual accomplishments. I had to make a cheat sheet because there's so many here. So on our way to our team championship, you know, the following individuals, some of them are here tonight, were individual state champions. So in Class M, the 100-meter hurdles, Amanda Castaldi. If I say her name, just stand up quickly so everyone on the board knows who I'm talking about if you're here. Congrats. In Class M, on the 400-meter dash, Avery Winters. In Class M, in the 300-meter hurdles, Patrice Mansfield. And in Class M, in the discus throw, Darla Jagros. An All-State winner, she wasn't the state champion at any, but she scored so high, and I don't think she's here tonight, but in the discus, jav, and the shot put, All-State was Maddie De Pasqual. And then, you know, Amanda Castaldi also went on to win All-New England in the hurdle event, so congratulations. Yeah, you can stand again. So the best in New England. And then, of course, I need to mention our 4x100-meter relay team of Amanda Castaldi, Avery Winters, Maya Resin, and Patrice Mansfield, who not only won every single meet they were in this year, but they were the New England Champions, State Open Champions, and they moved on to New England. So on a given year, if we just have one individual state champion, it's a tremendous accomplishment. The reason that we were the best team is because we had all of those individuals, and then some compiled more. And just to talk a little bit about Sheehan history, these are the following people who broke school records this year, and I'll read through these a little quicker. In the pole vault, in the triple jump, Erin Brennan. In the 100-meter sprint and the 100-meter hurdles, Amanda Castaldi. 200-meter and 400-meter, Avery Winters. 300-meter hurdles, Patrice Mansfield. In the discus, Darla Jagros. Distance medley and 4x800-meter relay was Angelica Katula, Olivia Platt, Lily Naggy-Lorant, and Cam Jamber. And the 4x100-meter relay team, which broke their own record about 15 times over the last year or two, of Patrice Mansfield, Amanda Castaldi, Maya Resin, and Avery Winters. So congratulations on being the best in Sheehan history in those particular events. We had many individuals, like I said, on a given year, maybe we only have one or two, but we had many individuals represent Sheehan and move on and compete at Nationals last week, and they did a tremendous job. I know that I was following and tracking all of your stats back home in Connecticut and looking at all the events, and it's such a proud moment for us to know that you're competing at the absolute highest level, and you represented yourselves and your families and your coaches and your school the same way you did all season with a tremendous amount of pride. So congratulations to everyone who went on to Nationals as well. And then the last individual acknowledgement that I want to give, and I'll call him up here, if you come right up here, Coach Charles Farley. He's been coaching in the district for just over five and a half decades. And, you know, I wanted to share with everybody here, you know, we all know that this year he won the Coach of the Year for the SCC, and last week, I was actually notified that he is Connecticut's representative, and I want to make sure I get this acronym right here, for the United States Track and Field and Cross Country Coaches Association, Coach of the Year for Connecticut. Our entire team was recognized by the Connecticut High School Coaches Association last week as the Team of the Year, just accolade after accolade after accolade. You are special, and you deserve every single bit of that. I'll hand the mic over to Coach Farley now.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. I told a reporter the other day that this was not just a four-year happening. We started this about six or seven years ago, when we really got involved with a little more detail in competition and pushing people a little bit further than we normally do. And we had several outstanding athletes, not the group we have right now, but individually we had several. So they kind of passed it on, passed it on, passed it on. And when these people came in in 2018, we, 19, I guess now, we were ready to really start making a push because we had what we felt was an outstanding class. Unfortunately, in 2020, we lost that season because that could have given us another great season, because they were ready to go. 2021, we won everything in our conference, and unfortunately, we had a slight setback at the state meet, which kind of enforced what we wanted to do this year, and everybody knew what was happening. We had the underclassmen fill in, and we just had a great group of seniors. It was a dream team, there was no doubt about it. Our overall record, including postseason meets, the way the Nationals do it, we were 166-0. We scored almost 1,000 points more than our opponents in duel meets. You say, "Well, how come?" Well, we had 26 kids, and there wasn't a lot of room to move people around. So you came in, you knew what you were going to get, we didn't change much because we couldn't, so that happened. We broke nine school records, some of them we broke several times over and over again. We had six All-Staters, and I won't go through all those numbers again because Coach took care of that for me. We had four gold All-State team members, that was the relay, and that was the winners of the State Open. We had six people who were academic, All-State, which was very nice. We also had three boys, which was good. We were All-New England, he covered those people. We were by the Connecticut High School Coaches Association, the Outstanding Girls Team, and we were also picked for that by the Record Journal. We have several athletes that are being honored by the New Haven Journal Courier. We know the seven girls went to the Nationals in Franklin Field in Philadelphia, and two went to the Nike Nationals at North Carolina. Our team average during the season academically was 3.7, not quite as high as the UConn girls, but we were getting close. All of this could not have happened without a coaching staff that was really dedicated to everything that we were doing. They stayed focused, they stayed working in the direction that we had set up, what our goals were, and it worked out for everybody. Two of those people are here right now, Coach Nozel, who is my right-hand man, he's the numbers guy, he's the one who comes in and says, "We can do this," and he gives them the numbers that prove it, and then they just go out and do it, which is nice. Coach Duhan, who takes care of our distance runners. We had two more people, Mr. Terrence Brown, who is with our jumpers, and Mr. Chris Warren, who was involved with our throwers. And you ask, "What did I do?" Not much. So we will turn this back to Mr. Daley to do the next phase.
Thank you, Coach. So I'm going to be calling all of your names, and even your teammates who are unable to be here tonight, we're still going to call their name to acknowledge them. Coach Farley will be handing out certificates. After you receive your certificate, if you could just stay up here altogether, we'll open that banner back up, get a couple pictures, and you'll be able, up here, you'll be a little closer, you'll be able to thank the board members behind me in person for the opportunity to be recognized tonight. So again, for our CIAC Class M and State Open Champions, start with Carrie Allardice, Savannah Bowman, excuse me, Erin Brennan, Amanda Castaldi, Madison De Pasqual, Emily Sorry, Coach, I'll slow down. And Coach Nozel, Coach Duhan, you can please join us up here, too. Get the cameras out.
Congratulations.
Wonderful job.
Awesome job, guys. Congratulations.
As the girls are sitting down, just wanted to say congratulations again, and congratulations to the coaches and the athletic director. What a wonderful accomplishment. I know you all worked very hard for this, and you persevered, and you did a wonderful job. So enjoy this celebration, and congratulations again, and congratulations to the parents as well, because it is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate your children even more. So congratulations to the staff as well. Wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you, Mrs. I just want to say and recognize that, as the coach said, this is not something that came about in one year. You guys have had it tough, and you guys have persevered through COVID and maintained your athleticism to really be untouchable in the state. And that is something that nobody will ever be able to take away from you. So hold your heads high, for those of you coming back, you get to mentor new students next year. And on behalf of the board, you guys are why we do what we do. You're very special, you bring it home for us as to, we get to see the product of our work. Parents and families, they couldn't do it without you. I know there's a lot of shuffling and carpooling and missed car rides and all that fun stuff. So thank you to everyone, we are very, very proud of you, and that banner is just absolutely awesome, especially that bottom line. Congratulations. If there are any public comments, now is the time that we can take public comment. Seeing none, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. Votto and Mr. Doring is the first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're now in executive session. For those of you leaving, have a wonderful summer and thank you for coming. Good evening and welcome back to the rest of our Board of Education meeting. I would like to make a motion to come out of executive session. May I have a second? Mrs. Regan seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Hearing none, we are out of executive session. We are on to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. I would like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda for items 7.1 through 7.38 and 7.40 through 7.60. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? No? The consent agenda as described passes. Moving on to items removed from consent agenda. Item number 7.39 has been removed from consent agenda. Mr. Doring, this one's yours.
Thank you, Ms. Raccio. So the issue that I have with this policy, I'm reading from the first paragraph, it states, "A student who is under age 17 and a mother may attend adult education classes if her request is approved by the board." I take issue with the fact that this is only for mothers and not also for fathers because of what it symbolizes. I think that's symbolizing that the childcare burden is all to fall on the female, which I don't find to be appropriate for today's society.
Thank you, Mr. Doring.
So the language reflects what the Connecticut State law is.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Passeretti, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. I actually thought about this after we left our last meeting, after Mr. Dering made his comments at the previous meeting. I agree with Mr. Dering, I think that, you know, in this day and age, a father could be the caregiver just as much as the mother could be a caregiver, and I think that we need to extend it to either parent. I think we don't need to even say mother, father, I said, I believe we can just change that to parent.
I would have to check with our attorneys that you could supersede the law in this particular case. So this also reflects in one of our student policies, married and pregnant students, which has the same language, although there's going to be a need for a technical edit on that one because it states, from the model policy from CAEB, as I shared with Mr. Dering, that it was students 16 and under and a mother. The law is clear, the way it's written, it is for 17 and under and mothers. I recognize the societal implications of that, but that is something you would need to take up with your state representative. I certainly am more than happy to reach out to Shipman and Goodwin and ask them to inquire if we could be more progressive in our policy, but I don't have that answer for you this evening.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Votto.
Can somebody read me that part of the policy? Do you have it?
I could pull that up again, Mr. Votto.
The first paragraph that Mr. Dering is, it's a sentence within that Mr. Dering is referring to, "The adult education program shall be open to all residents over the age of 17, not attending any public or private elementary, middle, or senior high school. A student who is under age 17 and a mother may attend adult education classes if her request is approved by the board." And that is the exact language that's written in the state statute for adult education.
Mrs. Latour, can students under 17 approach the board now regardless of their sex to...
Not to attend adult education, no. They are required to attend public school. If they choose not to, they can withdraw and be homeschooled. Students who are any student who is 17 and older with a parent can withdraw from public school and attend adult ed regardless of their status as a parent or guardian or caregiver.
Mr. Ross.
As long as we maintain all the state law language, can't we insert additional language of our own?
I'd have to check what our recommendation from our attorney is before I can answer that question, Mr. Ross.
Because as Mr. Raccio said, this is definitely discriminatory against males. If a father of a child and he's only 16 years old, for some reason, he has to get an education, we're telling him, "No, you can't unless you come to school." With the mother, we're assuming that only the mother is able to take care of a newborn child, and I would like to get a legal opinion on that before we vote on that. I want to table this, I move we table this until we get a legal opinion.
I second. Okay, we have a, we're under discussion for the agenda. Any more discussion on the agenda item? Okay. Hearing none, Mr. Ross, you would like to table, and Mrs. Passeretti, you have seconded the table. Any other discussion on tabling? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling this until we get guidance from the attorneys, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mrs. Latour, we can put this back on next month's agenda if we have some more guidance, if not, we will defer to a later instructional meeting and then come back to the consent agenda. But we can list under instruction next month if we're ready to. I don't want you to cancel any vacations or anything to do this, but if we're ready to and take action at that time. Okay, moving on to item number nine, correspondence. In Mrs. Roscoe's absence, Mrs. Passeretti has called you to step in. Can you help us with correspondence?
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. So we have a thank you note here from the family of James A. Cafarelli, and it states, "Dear Wallingford Board of Education Members, thank you for sending the beautiful flowers in honor of my father. I truly appreciate your support during this difficult time. Sincerely, Danielle."
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Moving on to committee reports, 10.1, ACES Governing Board Representative. Mr. Ross.
The only business of note that has come up since the last month is they reposted the ACES at Chase principal position because they narrowed down the first poll to two finalists. The ECL felt, the ELC felt that both candidates emerged in the first two rounds were strong, and each had something the other did not. By the same rationale, each candidate was missing characteristics and experience that they felt were needed to succeed in the article. So we thought it was prudent, and we reposted the position. We also are posting a principalship for Bridges, which is a new alternate middle high school to be housed in the old Whitney East building on Skiff Street. They've had numerous requests from several districts to meet the needs of alternate education middle and high school students. And basically, that's about the important things that came up.
Yes, Mr. Votto, a question?
Mr. Ross, do you know what the numbers are like for Chase as far as enrollment? Do they talk about that? I notice there's an awful lot of advertisements lately out there.
So, we have a thank you note here from the family of James A. Cafarelli, and it states, "Dear Wallingford Board of Education members, thank you for sending the beautiful flowers in honor of my father. I truly appreciate your support during this difficult time. Sincerely, Danielle."
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Moving on to committee reports. 10.1, ACES Governing Board Representative. Mr. Ross.
The only business of note that has come up since the last month is they reposted the ACES at Chase principal position because they narrowed down the first poll to two finalists. The ECL felt -- the ELC felt that both candidates who merged in the first two rounds were strong and each had something the other did not. By the same rationale, each candidate was missing characteristics and experience that they felt were needed to succeed in the article. So, we thought it was prudent and we reposted the position. We also are posting a principalship for Bridges, which is a new alternate middle high school to be housed in the old Whitney East building on Skiff Street. They've had numerous requests from several districts to meet the needs of alternate education, middle, and high school students. And basically, that's about the important things that came up.
Yes, Mr. Vado, a question?
Mr. Ross, do you know what the numbers are like for Chase as far as enrollment? Do they talk about that? I notice there's an awful lot of advertisements lately out there.
Yeah, well, they've been advertising for over two years. They started an advertising program two years ago. I don't have with me, but I can get you the exact numbers.
I'm just wondering if they bit off more than they can chew. Do they have -- because it's a very big campus school, and it was supposed to be the new Thomas Edison School from what I remember, and that certainly wasn't the same size. So, I was just wondering how they were doing with--
All right, I'll get those figures for you.
It's no big deal, but, okay.
I do know between Wintergreen Moving and Thomas Edison Moving, they are in the midst of beginning significant construction projects. And I don't know if that was approved at the meeting, or it might have been the meeting previous to this?
I think the previous meeting.
So, it did get approved?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we will follow along with the progresses. They do a significant amount of construction to those facilities. 10.2, the Business Think Tank. Do we have an update on that? No update this month. The sum of these, because we're heading into the summer months, may not have updates. The STEM Steering Committee, no update. The Systemwide PTAC, I believe there has not been a meeting for that. The Special Education PTAC, no update there either. Plan of Conservation and Development has not met. Food Service Strategic Planning Committee, have you met, Mr. Doring? Nope. And the DEI Committee, I don't think they're meeting again till the fall. Facility Steering Committee, I believe you are meeting in the fall again, right? Okay. And no update from Cabe. That was a quick Section 10. Number 11, Old Business. I don't think we have any Old Business. So, we are on to the Instructional Committee meeting with Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you, Mrs. Raccio. So, the first item on the agenda is 12.1, the Approval and Acceptance of Resignations. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Cristiano De Luccia effective June 30th, 2022. Cristiano De Luccia has been a special education teacher since January of 2022. All in favors, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions, passes. Next, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Gianna Gerga effective June 30th, 2022. Gianna Gerga has been a family and consumer science teacher since August 2015. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion passes. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Sarah Hewlett effective June 30th, 2022. Sarah Hewlett has been a school social worker since September of 2021. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of James Genova effective June 30th, 2022. James Genova has been an English teacher since August 2004 and an instructional leader for Language Arts since August of 2020. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Elizabeth Jane Palmer effective June 30th, 2022. Elizabeth Jane Palmer has been a PE health teacher since August of '21. Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Next order of business, number 12.2, is the Approval of Acceptance of Retirements. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Susan Lorenzo effective June 30th, 2022. Susan Lorenzo has been a school counselor since August of 2008, for a total of fourteen years in the Wallingford Public Schools. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Next order of business for the Instructional Committee is item number 12.3, which is the Discussion and Review of Superintendent's Goals for 2021 through 2022. There is no action on item number 12.3 for this evening. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado. Moving on to the Operations Committee, I will turn it over to Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Castelli.
Good evening. The Operations Committee met on Monday, June 13th. We had discussions regarding the continuing surplus. Mr. Barone gave his financial report and the surplus and the use of unencumbered funds, which he outlined, which was a total of $115,000, which we did go ahead and approve. Or -- and then, well, it was on the consent agenda for to move to tonight's approval. So, the biggest discussion of the evening was probably around the cafeteria financial reports and the plan to increase the lunch meals. And we did go ahead and decide which plans we are going to do an increase for all across the board to help make up for the difference, I think is what it was. But, so we did make a plan to go ahead and increase lunch pricing and to institute pricing. I do believe that we did have to institute lunch, a fee for some of the lunch, for some of the meals that had not been--
Breakfast.
Rose breakfast, that was it. So, we did go ahead and approve that. And then, we also noted, he did, Mr. Bondi also noted that the feed, the summer feeding program would not be continued this year due to the program changes because it was the end of COVID. So, that was the bulk of our conversations.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Castelli. Going on to new business, I do not have any, but I will turn it over to the Administration Report with Superintendent Bellisi.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, just to recap for this month, it's been a busy month. This was -- it ended our school year on Wednesday, June 15th, where we had both graduations, which was a lovely event. I was fortunate to attend the Mark T. Sheehan High School event, which was a wonderful celebration of our students. That morning, I did attend the Lyman Hall graduation rehearsal, so I got to see both sides of town. And they both were lovely events. I'm sure the Mrs. Turner had an opportunity to speak at Lyman Hall that day, but the rehearsal was lovely as well. So, it was nice to see the students and wish them well. Project -- excuse me, project graduation was a wonderful success for all of our students, and all of that went well as well. We did have an opportunity also to participate in some of the graduations that we had. I know Mrs. Latour and Mrs. Turner weren't able to attend some of the events that I was unable to attend this June, like our CNA pinning ceremony, our adult ed graduation took place this month. We had medical graduation, the varsity scholars. Our senior proms were off without a hitch. So, it was really a wonderful end of the school year. Mrs. Latour and Mrs. Turner and I had an opportunity to walk on Saturday, June 18th, in the Wallingford 350-plus-two celebration. And it was really a wonderful day. The weather couldn't have been more perfect for us. And we got to walk in front of our bands. So, both of our bands were joined together, and they sounded fabulous. So, we really enjoyed the walk together, and it was great to walk through the town and to be part of that event. So, it was really a wonderful event to celebrate the town. On Monday, the 20th, I did attend a breakfast at the Historical Society, where we did have some of our students recognized. So, Senator Craig Fishbein had run a contest for our students in the middle school grades to write an essay as to who is your favorite pre-1960 Wallingford historical figure and why. And so, the committee had selected top three finalists and then a top essay writer. So, we had Luke Babarski, who was the top essay writer, and then he read his essay, which was lovely. And then, we had three finalists, and they're in no particular order, but we had Amelia Farrell, Carter Legasi, and Maritza Hernandez, who are also recognized. It was really a wonderful event, and it was very nice to see our students recognized and share some of the history. So, then, just to move into some of the things that we're planning here at Central Office for the summer, since we did wrap up the school year, we're gonna start planning for the fall. As we've been, but we'll continue to kind of make that our focus as we move through and plan for schedules and professional development and getting our school ready for the start of the school year. As I mentioned in our weekly update, Mrs. Karen Veyou, myself, and Mrs. Latour have been working on redoing our website and kind of revitalizing it. And we're looking to go live with that in August. And so, we'll have a new look and a user-friendly website, we're hoping, with all of our tools that are needed and essential for our families and our students. So, we're really excited about this process that we have moving forward. We're starting to work. Our Transportation Department is starting to work very hard with the transition to the new company. So, Specialty Transportation will be in with us on July 1st. And so, the Transportation Department has been working hard under Mr. Barone to transition and get ready for the new school year with the new company. So, we're excited for that start of the school year and to make it an easy and successful transition. We're gonna continue to hire this summer for our certified and non-certified staff as we move through. Thank you for accepting some of our resignations and retirements. So, we'll post for those and move through and continue with that. And lastly, we have a lot of programs running this summer. So, we have a lot of summer programs for our students, which has been a wonderful opportunity. And I'm sure you'll hear a little bit more about that from Mrs. Latour and Mrs. Turner as they share some of their reports. Thank you.
So, our Summer Sizzler Camp started this week. Summer Sizzler are opportunities for our elementary and middle school students to participate in enrichment-type summer activities. We started this last year really with the purpose of getting kids comfortable, back socializing after the COVID disruptions of their school years. Some of the examples of the courses that we're running this year, and usually they're a week or two, fitness fun, creative sewing, summer art exploration, video production, stories in STEM, Vex Robots, Space Camp, reading, promote reading, basically, and Summer Capstone. Our Credit Recovery Summer School starts July 5th. We have quite a few middle school and high school programs running. This is for our middle school and high school students who need to regain credit in their core academics. We're running several English Language Arts classes, math classes, geometry, Algebra I, Algebra II, World Lit, American Literature, U.S. Gov. and Politics, Chemistry, Biology are just a few. In addition to, we're fortunate to be able to run a PE in a health section as well with certified staff. And then, of course, our elementary and EL bilingual summer programming starts as well. We have reading and math help for kindergarten through fifth grade as well as over forty participants in our ELL summer programming. The ELL summer programming that we're running is both in-person and virtual to help some of our families who have some transportation difficulties. So, our summer programming ends July 29th. It has been a blessing to have so many staff participating because we can only run these classes if we have the staff interested in teaching them. So, a huge thank you to Jim Genova and Gianna Gerga, who have done a tremendous amount of planning for this. They are our summer school directors. Gianna Gerga will continue through the month of July with some help from Cara Phillips now that Mr. Genova is starting his new position. And we're looking forward to a successful summer. The Curriculum Office, actually, in the summer, it's a busy time, but it's also a quiet time. The curriculum coordinators are not 12-month employees, so they are in quite sporadically over the summer, which leaves for a very quiet office. But, this is the time where I will look to update our curriculum review cycle, plan professional development opportunities, create the assessment plan for the district, begin to analyze our data, both standardized and non-standardized, with the lens of writing goals for improvement at the different levels, as well as updating our strategic plan. So, while they are in and out for a few days over the course of the summer, it is a time where we really can buckle down and look at where we are curricularly, where we are with our data, and what goals we need to set for the fall. So, that's kind of the plan for the summer. And your first instructional meeting of the year in September will have your data presentation of all of our standardized assessment data from this spring, from Smarter Balance, from NGSS, from the Los Links, from the SAT Day, so that you can have a good picture of where we are as a district to start our new school year.
Good evening. Leave my glasses unplined. Our Extended School Year Program starts July 5th, and it'll go through August 5th for some students and July 29th for others. We have over 140 students attending the two programs, and we have 11 peer mentors. So, our Peer Mentor Program is a fantastic program where high school students come in and they work with our students with special needs on social skills, recreation. It's a really great opportunity, community service opportunity, as well as a college and career readiness for those students who may think they want to be teachers. We have begun planning our professional development for the 22, 23 school year. Prior to leaving for the summer, our staff members shared their interest in regards to topics as well as presenters. So, we are going through those wish lists and coming up with a plan for the school year as well as looking at what we need to do based on the data that we have received with the end-of-the-year data. The new IAP system, which has been my life this year, goes live this Friday, fingers crossed. My secretarial staff, as well as the IT staff, have worked tirelessly to ensure that all student records are gonna be ready to the state. So, on July 1st, we can have that all ready to go. In my alternative role as the concise president-elect, I actually have meetings with the state on a weekly basis. So, the directors from across the state will be reporting any issues or concerns they have with the new system to me. I will be talking to the state and we'll be problem solving. So, which is great for us because I am like on the go for everything. I will know all the issues. I'll know all the solutions, so we'll be good to go. I say that, but then July 1st will come in, and the world will end for everybody. The past three -- and on that note, the past three Wednesdays, my secretarial staff and I participated in focused professional development from the state on the new system. We -- I also attend an in-depth training next week for a couple hours to go over that system. We have 15 teachers within the district, one from, at least one from each building, who will, who have volunteered to be trained this summer in the new system. That is a virtual training for four hours. They will then, in turn, become the trainers of their building for our staff. So, our staff will have a key member within their building to go to at any time for support over the next school year. We have worked very closely with the teachers' union in terms of what supports we need to put in place. This is a very new and overwhelming process, and a lot of our staff are really anxious about the change. We have recognized that anxiety about the change, and we will be providing as much support as we can throughout. So, we are doing a lot of planning this summer to make sure that we have that in place for them. We will also be planning the parents in the new system because the parents will have direct access, live access, to their children's IAP as soon as it goes into the new system, which is fantastic. But that will require a lot of parent training. So, we will be doing that in September and October. We'll make sure that we're doing that not only in English but in Spanish. The new IAP comes in 20 languages automatically translated for parents, which is just an amazing asset for us as a district. On June 7th, we hosted a substance abuse awareness program for our parents of middle school and high schoolers. Although it wasn't as well-attended as we had hoped, it wasn't a really busy time of the school year. We do plan on hosting additional events throughout the year next year, and we will be advertising those and encouraging parents and families to come out and just learn about substance abuse and how to, what we're calling, change the script. So, how to advocate with your doctors about pain medication and things to that effect. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Mr. Vado.
Yeah, just bear with me for a sec. So, if, in the spring, my child we met had a PPT and IEP was written, it was the form that is used now presently.
Correct.
So, that new form or whatever won't be, won't be--
I can answer that for you about finishing your question.
Until next spring when the other PPT takes--
Correct. So, the new IAP will not go in effect until that student requires an annual review or a triennial meeting.
Okay.
So, any PPTs between now and that meeting will be on the-- So any PPTs between now and that meeting will be on the old IAP, which is helpful for our staff and the parents because it provides a slow transition into that new IAP. However, the system will be live for them, so one of the things that we've been doing is downloading the last three years of all documents for parents, and all of those archived documents will be in the system. So say your son had an IAP last year, you could go in the system and see his IAP, any evaluations, any reports.
The present one, right?
Correct, correct. That's how it's supposed to work. I'm not going to promise that it's going to work like that just yet, but that's how it's supposed to work.
So it's even being done presently with the old form?
Correct, yes. We just did that download today, fingers crossed that it worked. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mrs. Castelli.
Yes, Miss Turner, just a quick question. Is the state giving us support going forward? In other words, if you can't answer a question or you're having trouble in the new system, who's our -- you know, you have to train the trainers, and that's great, but what happens if they don't have the answer?
So the state is saying that they're having their consultants trained, so they will have consultants that we will be able to call to get support in the new IAP system if we have questions.
No other questions? I do have a couple things. I know we're trying to move along here, but I did want to recognize one gift and donation that we accepted on the consent agenda, but we didn't give public comment for. I'd like to thank the Staples Community Give Back Program for donating five hundred and forty backpacks for the three, five elementary schools, Parker Farm, Fritz, Rock Hill, and Pond Hill, with a value of $2,700. Those will come in very handy as we prep for the fall, which will come quickly. Mrs. Bellisi, I agree with you. Graduation, the weather could not have been more perfect. It was wonderful to see all the families and students. I also was at Sheehan this year, and it was just a lovely, lovely evening. Mrs. Latour, I know you've worked very, very hard getting summer school off and running, and it's a large, large number of students, and we're trying to do our best to give everybody the opportunity to recover from COVID. So great thanks to all the teachers who, on top of a very difficult and exhausting year, have stepped forward to help these students so that they can be in the best possible position academically come the start of the 2223 school year. And Mrs. Turner, we are probably the best district in the state right now when it comes to what we're looking forward to for the IAP program. We, there are some districts that maybe have one, train the trainer. We have them in every building. It's unheard of for what you've done and made sure that our parents are in a position that they can access the records, that this is as seamless as possible for the students, and that the teachers feel supported and have the tools that they need, again, to hit the ground running. So thank you all for your continued dedication. As we enter into the summer months, a reminder to the public that we will not be having normal scheduled operations and instructional meetings, although we may have one here and there as needed for hiring purposes and to move some things along. But we will have our next regular board meeting here at the end of July. We do, however, have a special Board of Ed meeting for July eleventh, Monday, at 5:00 PM, and that will be in the Board of Education conference room. Mr. Ross.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention in regard to graduation, I'd like to congratulate the people that ran Project Graduation. It was a very big success. There were a couple hundred students that were there that stayed the night and had a wonderful time, and it was a safe time for them. I just want to congratulate them because I know they had a very difficult time this year, and I want to congratulate and give them our thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we will call this meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.